We will start off with the Riley County Police update. There's no action required on this, just listening.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Commission. Brian Pete with the Riley County Police Department. Just going to go over some quick information and try to see if I can spend a lot more time or available to answer any questions that the Commission may have of me. So we're going to talk initially about just some monthly statistics, what RCPD has encountered during Fake Patty's Day, breeze a little bit about road restrictions in Aggieville and how we're working with the ABA, and then spend a good amount of time on the budget session and our planning and how we're moving forward with that one. So as far as our statistics, just going to go over February as it's the start of the year and then kind of give an idea from five-year averages and moving backwards. Part one crimes for February, we were forty-four percent below the five-year average compared to last year. There was a thirty-seven percent decrease in part one crimes, and those include violent crimes, property crimes, anything that you would think of if you're thinking about violent crimes in a community. For those part one violent crimes, we were fifty percent below the five-year average. There were five aggravated assaults or batteries, unfortunately, two rapes, zero robberies, and zero homicides reported during the month of two thousand twenty-five for February. For robbery, there were no robberies reported in February, which is a hundred percent below the five-year average. There were two aggravated batteries and three aggravated assaults during the month of February that were reported. This is a fifty-two percent below the five-year average. Two of the incidences in February were domestic related. As of the twelfth of this month, there were arrests made in two of the incidences that I had just spoken about. For part one property crimes, we were forty-three percent below the five-year average. Property crime included four burglaries, three larcenies from motor vehicles, one auto theft, and two arson incidences. The rest of the larcenies, or the rest of the incidents were larcenies, and there were four of them. And looking particularly at the, again, RCPD is a very data-driven organization. So we look at data to help us curb emotions, thoughts, perceptions, anything else like that, and then we can take a very detailed approach in how we work towards minimizing crime and eliminating it from our community. So to give you kind of an idea, we saw an uptick in part one property crimes in the month of December. There were a hundred and twenty-one. In January, those went down to seventy, or sixty-seven, and then in February, that went down to fifty. Looking at how we use intelligence-led policing and how we conduct our investigations, two of the individuals that we've arrested, and now we've seen an over fifty percent drop in crimes. So we're not looking at broad strokes, we're looking at targeting of individuals and how we work through these types of things. For structural burglaries, we were seventy-two percent below the five-year average for February. One was a non-residential, three were residential of the burglaries. Two of them occurred in Manhattan, and two occurred in Aug.. For vehicle burglaries, we were eighty-five percent below the five-year average. There were no signs of forced entry of the report. So again, as I did with the county, I want to take this opportunity to remind members of the public, a lot of times when folks are looking to, when folks break into other people's vehicles, sometimes those are crimes of opportunity. So we encourage people, lock your doors, because sometimes it can be just as simple as that. Try to keep things out of view, so your purse, your keys, change. You know, it's a shame that if your window gets broken for two dollars and twenty-eight cents of change in the cup holder, now you have to pay over five hundred dollars in a deductible for that. It's a shame we live in that type of a society, but unfortunately, we do. So again, I just want to remind folks to lock their vehicles and keep their windows rolled up. For motor vehicle thefts, we were down seventy-seven percent from the five-year average. The vehicle that was stolen for that month has been recovered since the twelfth of this month. And DUIs, we were twenty-four percent below the five-year average for February. Traffic accidents, we were seven percent above the five-year average. So we're paying closer attention to hotspot areas that these things occur, and especially with distracted driving. Just today, going from meeting to meeting to meeting, I've gone past, there were at least eight people that ran stoplights. I'm talking like stale red stoplights. So these are the types of things that we're keeping an eye on. We're getting a lot of complaints from the citizens in our community, so we're looking at how we can minimize those. The number of preventable traffic accidents that have happened in February was about six percent below the five-year average. And for statistics that everyone loves, I'm about done with those. Talking about Fake Patty's Day. As you know, the first year I arrived, we, you know, again, this was my first Fake Patty's Day, and everybody was telling me, hey, you know, it's going to be your first Fake Patty's Day, good luck, have fun. We saw a few things, some lessons learned, and then bringing in different strategies and ideas. So last year, we've adopted, we've adopted an approach of keeping folks moving, utilizing the current laws that were on the books and holding folks accountable to bad behavior, but at the same trying, at the same time, understanding that there are people here who are having, you know, a good time. So of all in all, we have seen a noticeable drop of bad behavior. Now, again, that's not to say that there has been bad behavior that's going on in the hotels when folks are coming from out of town. But all in all, we're especially thankful for the young folks who did have parties, because the bottom line is, what gives us the power to enforce the laws are the people we deal with. And when we approach folks and ask folks for certain things, and if they comply, it makes everything all the much better. So I want to thank the young students who were having house parties for their cooperation, for their kindness in our interactions from there. For our calls for service, we were at five hundred and three that were related to the Aggieville period. Now, this is going to start, you know, like, pretty much at Saturday morning, very early in the morning, all the way to Sunday. This includes both officer and citizen-initiated calls. Our five-year average was four hundred and thirty-five, but we were at, again, five hundred and three. Keeping in mind that this is, it could be anyone calling for any particular reason, related to what's going on in the Aggie, or not just the Aggieville area, but around the blocks of Raton. But this is also calls for service as they relate to police officers, or we're saying, we're dispersing a crowd, we're writing a citation. So we've seen drop in citizen calls for service, but increases in other calls because we were being more proactive in our enforcement efforts. So for those citizen-initiated calls, a hundred and ninety were listed. And again, so keeping in mind, the majority of those calls for service came from police actions and things that we've been doing. The highest concentration of calls for service fell within the Aggieville area. And of the reports filed, we were looking at the top five reports that we were dealing with, were found property, simple batteries, possession of drugs, larcenies, and then disorderly conducts. So then finally, for citations, looking at the number of citations, we were above the five-year average. As we had mentioned to folks, we did a campaign. I'm not going to say it's a zero tolerance, but it's just holding people accountable for their behavior. One of the things that always strikes me is when I hear people saying that they're going to leave town because they don't want to be here when it happens. I don't think that you should have to leave your own home for fear of these different types of things. So we take that very personal. Again, we're not out to quash people having a college experience. We just want people to be more respectable of others. And I think that's the feedback that we've gotten from people who live in those corridors, that they understand where they're at, but they just don't want the types of violations that they've had in the past. So historically, open container was the most cited. This year was no different. Park, followed by parking on private properties, and then calls to get people from stopping and standing in certain places. Again, just kind of giving folks an idea was, a lot of young kids were having individual house parties. And then we had people from, the majority of the problems, I can't tell you this from data, but I can tell you that in my experiences being out there, the majority of issues we had were people from out of town. And so if a young person's having a party at their own home in their backyard, we saw floods of people from out of town going into that backyard and it getting to the point that it's disruptive. And then the homeowners or the renter would wave us down and say, can you get these people out of my yard? So there were a few times that we had to come back to the same places over and over again. But that's what I'm talking about when I mean that different type of cooperation. I don't think people want the trouble that's been associated in the past with that type of behavior. And then finally, the arrests that we've had, DUIs, alcohol or drugs related. We had six traffic violations, five interference obstruction were five, alcohol minors in possession or consumptions were five, and disorderly conduct, there were four. So finally, in summing this up, I just want to thank Lawrence, I want to thank K-State, I want to thank Emporia, and I want to thank ABC, as well as KHP, for all of the help that they've given us. So if there are any questions specifically related to Fake Patty's Day, I can definitely answer those. The last two things I want to go through is, we're working hard with the Aggieville Business Association regarding road restrictions. We had a presentation and discussion at the previous law board about what exactly is that RCPD can be doing to maintain safety, but also not impeding business, business traffic. We understand that this is, we're talking about livelihoods, not just for the people who own those businesses, but as well as the people that they employ, and that we know that it has a tax revenue component. But we all know, each of us puts safety ahead of everything else, but that doesn't mean we can't walk and chew gum at the same time. So I want to let the City Commission know that we are having very, are going to be reinitiating very robust discussions, very honest discussions back and forth, and seeing how can we make sure that we're coming to a mutual understanding and agreement with road restrictions. Finally, the budget season is coming up. So we have been, over the last, since I've been here, getting an idea of what the budget process looks like. The previous year, we have been looking at lean Six Sigma as a way to look at our budgeting system. So primary among those is going through each line item, trying to figure out if this is a duplication of technology or effort that we have someplace else, and if we're not, we get, and we do have that, we consolidate it, we get rid of one, and then any of the internal savings, if you will, move right towards operational expenses. As you all know, gas has gone up, utilities has gone up, everything that's related has gone up. So rather than constantly keeping our budget where we're at, and then coming back to the law board and saying, please give us some more money, we've made those internal cuts and reallocations. And we've also looked at levels of leadership, and we've also looked at levels of where we need people. So in certain cases, we've gone, we've frozen positions, we've brought in other people, we've brought in people for different positions, so, and we've reduced certain ranks. That fluctuates, that ebbs and flows depending on what the needs are that particular year. But I wanted to let you all know that none of that stuff is off the table as it relates to RCPD. So if we see we're top-heavy, we get rid of that. If we see that we need more leadership, then we work to that. So every year, we're flexible, and we're down to the point that our budget, that we're even with our Xerox machine, that we don't print color copies, that we're trying to save at least another five hundred dollars a year. So we do this line item by line item. And within the next few weeks, we'll be having discussions with members of our law board, telling them and showing them all of the different things that we've cut, what the, and reallocated, where that money is going to. And then we also want to, when we introduce the budget, we have to introduce it to our law board first, but we also want to work with the county as well as the city. And one of the things that Commissioner Motta, our board president, has mentioned is, what is going to be the actual physical fiscal impact of both the county and both the cities? So as we work through this, when we do those initial reports, we want to make sure that we're sharing that with the city and that we're coming up with numbers that we can all agree on, because we all know statistics can be skewed any which way. Our budget priorities, again, are going to remain COLA and as well as the Arnold Group's salary survey recommendations. As you all may know, several years back, we brought in professionals that came in. They looked at what our salaries and benefits were, and they said, you need to be here. But the one thing we also want to be cognizant of is, we don't want to contribute to an unhealthy cycle of always trying to outbid KHP, Emporia, Wichita, Topeka, because that's not sustainable for the people that we're sworn to protect. You can't say that, hey, we're going to protect you, but so-and-so's making so much money, so do what you can for me. It's just not sustainable, and it's not fair. You know, if we claim to protect people, we should be looking out for them fiscally as well. So we were looking at, how do we implement this salary survey on a level that's not going to all at once shock the system? So we've drawn it out, two years, three years, but we're chasing a dragon in that particular case. So we're looking at out-of-the-box type of thinking, so that we're not coming back and saying, we need to get this salary survey off of our target list. And that my hope is, the next several years after this budget, we're only looking for increases as related to costs of doing business. Nothing for salary, nothing for equipment, nothing for vehicles, nothing for anything else, but just the cost of doing business over the next several years, because they're going to be especially lean. So that's what my goal and intent is. And then we've got a number that the law board has graciously told us about, that they want us to target, and I'm very confident that we're going to meet that number this year. So outside of that, that's the information that I have for the City Commission. I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Director Pete?
What kind of feedback did you get from your Fake Patty's messaging and enforcement and stuff like that from the community?
Well, it was mixed. So on social media, it was, you guys are stupid, who does your marketing? All kinds of things like that, and then we'll have, which I think is grateful for us because we've invested a lot of time trying to gain the trust of the community that we serve. And other people were kind of saying, they're not trying to cause a fight, they're just trying to tell people what they're going to do. We want to be transparent. Out there on the, we got a lot of positives from individuals who weren't participating in Fake Patty's Day. People were saying, hey, for the first time in a long time, I was able to come out and sit on my porch or hang out my front lawn at two o'clock in the afternoon. So that was very good. And even the participation, as I mentioned, the cooperation from individuals saying, we don't want these folks here, was very good. But now it's starting to transition over to, you know, if you push it out of one area, where is it going to go to? So if we have people here that are coming in from out of town that want to act like idiots, they're going to do it where they think they can do it. So unfortunately, this year, there was a lot of problems with folks in hotels.
Right, I followed your campaign, and I listened to your episode on the radio. I thought you did a really good job of just being upfront with the way you were going to enforce the day. And, you know, I think you did a pretty good job, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I do want to say that, again, it wasn't, we weren't out there, you know, being disrespectful to kids. There were a lot of people that were taking pictures with police officers. So we weren't robotic, not, you know, emotionless people. It was, we can interact, but we can be friendly, and we can be polite as we do it.
Director, can you just speak a little bit about what level of coordination is implied in working with the external entities? How does that planning take place? How are positions allocated around town for the Highway Patrol or for Emporia?
So the communication kind of comes into, a lot of folks will reach out to us and ask us, what is it that we need? So of the agencies that were able to give us bodies, we spent the majority of that personnel power in the residential neighborhoods. KHP has their mission to looking for DUIs and things to that effect, and ABC kind of as well. They were looking, they spent a lot of time downtown. So we staggered different shifts that we had very good coverage during the day, all the way to in Aggieville. And just to kind of give you an idea of the right place at the right time, one of the traffic accidents was DUI-related. Somebody ran into the rear of one of the ABC vehicles. So that kind of tells you that we're in the right place, again, at the right time, everything to that effect. But that coordination does go that way. And one of the other good things about being able to work with external agencies is, these were folks that are not going to, they're absorbing those overtime costs and bringing their officers here to work with us. So the only overtime costs that we're dealing with are the ones associated by bringing folks in on their days off and on their times off to work Fake Patty's Day.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other question? Do you have any idea how many ER visits we had this year?
Oh, that is a very good question. No, I do not, I can get you that data. Yes.
I think it's important for the public to understand the kind of heaviness that they put, that this puts on the ER, because a few years back, we had a friend who had a stroke, and sadly, on Fake St. Patty's Day, was not treated quickly. She did recover, but, you know, it's just sort of another thing. And I felt south of campus, it was really quiet by the city park and, I mean, further south. I mean, we just, it was, usually we have a lot of people walking back and forth and walking back and forth. And I just wanted to bring up one other thing that I would like the law board and you to talk about. And I've heard a lot of people who live, as I do, south of the city park, oh, south of the university, and I've been in a lot of trouble with people parking and just not even caring if they get the fifteen-dollar ticket. And maybe it's time to reevaluate, and they're even parking in people's driveways. And all the police can do is ticket them, and if they want to get them out of their driveway, they have to call the tow company, and they have to pay, the individual has to pay for the tow, which doesn't seem... You know, I said to this one person who called, I said, can you get out of your drive? She said, they couldn't get around the car, but, you know, this is particularly near those All the Patronies and Sororities on Sunset and Laramie. You know, they just don't have adequate parking for the number of girls and guys that are there. And they, they've not, you know, they park in the overnight areas that they're not supposed to park in. They park too close to driveways, so it's very difficult to get out. I don't know what we do, but they don't seem to mind a fifteen-dollar traffic ticket.
Yes, ma'am. We will get to work looking internally at what we're seeing, and then we will coordinate with the city as well.
Would that be something we'd have to take up here, to increase that fine as a city?
Well, I just thought the law board ought to talk about it and see what, maybe that isn't any way to deal with these issues. I don't know, but seriously, having people park in your driveway, that's kind of amazing. Okay, and no other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to discuss adoption of a common consumption area ordinance and the boundaries for downtown.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. So this evening, a continued discussion on common consumption areas, CCAs, what they're often referred to. But I want to give you all a little bit of background, just on some of the past conversations we've had with you all, tell you a little bit about the feedback we got from the two districts that we've kind of focused this conversation on, related to where these common consumption areas could occur. Dive into downtown specifically, given that they're wanting to pursue an ongoing CCA and what that boundary would look like, and then get some feedback and direction from you all so we could potentially come back with an ordinance for you to take action here. Last fall, though, we did have a work session related to this, and really, we just dove into what is a CCA? What's the difference between a CCA and what we've commonly see here in Manhattan, which is special events with alcohol? Typically, we've seen those special events with alcohol in downtown, where they've closed down the streets in coordination with their Third Thursdays. But at that meeting, the governing body gave direction to collaborate with the districts and RCPD on potential approaches to those CCAs. There was comfortability with the idea of an ongoing CCA, as well as event-specific ones. And then you all were amenable to the city being the permit holder. I just want to let you know that I spent some time on the slide and these verbs and adjectives to make sure it spelled out CCA right here in the... So I had to dig into the thesaurus and find some of those. But the city being the permit holder, you know, there are some specifics that come with that related to liability. Our civil liability for the city would be covered under the Kansas tort claims act. And then we did have conversations specifically with our insurer, and our existing coverage would apply to the CCA. Our existing insurer also ensures a couple other cities in Kansas who do have CCAs as well, so they were familiar with it. Starting with Aggieville first, this conversation, you know, and feedback session didn't go too long because really, it's not something the district wants to pursue from an ongoing basis right now. Ongoing meaning you're, you know, Monday through Sunday, or multiple days, every day of the week, you're having a CCA in place where that common consumption can occur, just because there's so much construction going on, and it's going to ebb and flow over the next couple of years with we got Twelfth Street and Laramie coming up, and then jumping to Morro, which is the big piece, and that main stretch through Aggieville. So they want to wait and re-approach the governing body post-construction. They do anticipate some type of possible specific, event-specific CCA over the next couple of years, much like downtown has done with the Third Thursday event. So they would come back with an application for a specific event. We'd talk through that boundary and all of those specifics and what that would look like. With downtown, we did hold some meetings with RCPD. We actually also included an ABC representative who's very familiar with these common consumption areas across the state, as well as our executive director for downtown. And their recommendation was moving forward with an ongoing CCA, looking at Monday through Sunday, so each day of the week, eight AM to eleven PM. This coincides with the timelines where the outdoor dining platforms are also available. So we wanted, we didn't want any inconsistencies between those two areas. This is an ongoing CCA too, where traffic would remain open to the public, unlike a special event where you're closing down the entire street. This is a general map of where we've landed. Once we come back with a potential ordinance, this will get more specific. It'll get into details like signage, what the true demarcation and boundary looks like when you're actually on the street. And I'll zoom in a little bit here. But this map, the top of the map is north, so you can see here on the east side, you have Manhattan Town Center, so it would include an area like the Plaza and Points Avenue. We don't envision it including the alley. And then you also have this stretch of Fourth Street here, excluding the parking lot to discourage any consumption there. But that's kind of where it starts and stops. We wanted to kind of start small, and you can always, of course, continue to evaluate and expand the district over time if that's something that the Commission and downtown is comfortable with doing.
Jared?
Yep.
So it looks like, I don't even remember what's at that corner. Is that where Sinkers is, just south of the...
Right here.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Or did they express, expressly request not to be included in that map?
I don't think they're excluded because they're directly adjacent to the boundary. So I think they would be able to participate, and if not, we would adjust this map to include it, because I don't, so I believe them and...
So I presume that all of the Commissioners received an email from the farmer's market, from the current president of the farmer's market, expressing an interest in their being included in this as well? So would that need to be contiguous? Would we need to include that parking lot that's behind the community building in order to have access so that people are not walking through a non-CC area?
So that, it's not something we envisioned that lot, and I believe it's this one right here across from Dillard's right here, that's where the farmer's market is held on Saturdays. And we have actually had some conversations with them about the potential sale of alcohol and the consumption of alcohol. We did, we have an agreement with the downtown farmer's market every year that the Commission passes in December. It includes us, the Manhattan Town Center, who leases the land, and then the farmer's market. And we did include language in the most recent one that we adopted at the end of 2024 that allows them to apply for a special event permit, so it could be handled that way outside of a CCA. Because, again, you wouldn't, you know, the idea here is that this CCA is ongoing. It's a specific area, whereas it wouldn't make sense probably to include this area within the CCA because it's only happening once a week at a certain time. So there's still an ability for this group to be included. Now, the question, though, of if you're at the farmer's market on a Saturday and you are participating potentially, can you then walk down the street, right, into the CCA? No, if they're not included. But so that's something that we need to look to and potentially pursue related to... But, you know, I just caution on how specific that is and having a boundary that leads to nowhere, I guess you could say. But you know, I I just caution on how specific that is and and having a boundary that leads to nowhere, I guess you could say, or a parking lot.
I I guess I.
Seven days of the week.
From from what I understand, they're interested in perhaps introducing a beer garden to the market this year. And have started the process of looking at what that permitting would be to do it on a weekly basis. And the presumption is that this could be a little bit more efficient way of having access to that. Authority to be able to do, to have that without having to specify each Saturday that they're planning to do this. Um, maybe we could, as part of our guidance to you, we can just suggest that you reach out to the steering committee at the farmer's market and continue that discussion with them.
Sure.
Well, I. I can see what what they're trying to do, uh, to make it a little bit easier. Um, although, you know, I know farmer's market starts at like eight o'clock in the morning, so. Well, so does the CCA, I guess. Um, so you know. Hey, if it's Saturday morning, then that's that's your thing, I guess, um, go for it. But um, you know, I I can, I can see the logic in not including it. Because we don't have this other parking lot included. And I don't know that we would necessarily want a parking lot to be somewhere where people can legally go and drink. Like whenever. Um, it kind of goes against the, I guess, what we're trying to do with this CCA. But then, yeah, again, like it it is a little bit more efficient.
So but Jared, with the CCA, they have to drink their beverage out of a cup. Isn't there something with like the cups and they have to have a specific cup? So it's not like people showing up with theoretically with coolers in a parking lot. Um, this is like supposed to be beverages purchased within the CCA.
And they, there's specific guidelines that the state requires for that CCA. I think what we could do is come back with, just so you all have an understanding of what the options are. Because there's definitely a way to allow them to do it on Saturdays from eight to noon or whenever it's occurring and it stay within that area.
Yeah, or I guess.
I think the thought also was, at least my mind went there, if you're waiting for your table at the chef and you can walk down to the farmer's market. And then walk back. And so I think they were also hoping to capture some additional traffic that maybe they don't always get and then not, especially when they're not doing a beer garden.
Yeah, I I think the the complexity comes with um, you have an area within a a boundary that's a parking lot. Here, we didn't include a parking lot that is only occupied for that use certain days of the year. Whereas you're trying to create an environment here where it's every day you can be within this boundary and operate in a certain way.
Yeah, and we would, I mean, in order to to allow, you know, someone to walk from a restaurant to the farmer's market. I think we would have to include some trail or something like that, you know, the. Uh, or or just include Third and Fourth Streets, you know, down to Leavenworth. Um, but then, you know, then you have to include Humboldt Street between Third and Fourth too. Because people will probably just walk across and then we'd need to include that entire parking lot. So, you know, we do kind of start adding things on, um, and I may be way out of line or way, you know, taking things to extremes. Or, you know, we could just have, if we did this one, we could do a separate area. That is, you know, just every Saturday from eight AM to noon or eight AM to one o'clock, this parking lot is a CCA.
Or you do a special event.
Yeah, or just do a special.
We do anticipate keeping that ordinance in some capacity because there are areas outside of Aggieville and downtown that utilize those. Blue Earth Park's a good example, where this CCA doesn't extend to that boundary yet. Uh, so i- if someone wants to do something in that area, which has happened quite a bit, uh, those avenues are still going to be there.
So you said that the alley behind Points would not be included. I thought there was the a place on Fourth Street that had alley parties sort of.
Manhattan Brewing does.
Manhattan Brewing Company, you all recently approved a special event with alcohol series.
Yeah.
Uh, and it allows them every Friday and Saturday to close this alley from two PM to ten PM or thereabouts. But again, that that would be, we didn't feel like it should be included uh, within the district because it's kind of a separate use. And you can, of course, obviously go out the front door of um, Manhattan Brewing Company during the ongoing basis of the CCA. And they can still do their special event. Uh, so th- this area excluding them doesn't preclude them from doing what they're doing.
I mean, I think the key is going to be just being very clear with the boundaries so that people aren't inadvertently making a mistake. If we, I mean, I would say if we see a lot of people are using the alley or wanting to, I would rather us find a way to accommodate that. Knowing that most of those businesses have alley entrances. So, I mean, just as long as we're being really clear with our boundary.
Yep, and Gina's provided a lot of good images of some other districts around the state and other states. Who have gotten really creative and with their with their signage on street and what the signs say and what the paint on potentially, you know, the the lines say. When you uh, no alcohol beyond this point and and even to the extent of you'll have districts who, you know. We 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 got into the conversation during our September work session of whether a private business wants to allow someone to come in with their cup. And they can have stickers that say beverages are welcome or, you know, please throw your cup away before you walk in, some of those things. And education, of course, is a big piece that we need to coordinate uh, once the ordinance is created and the boundary gets established.
Do we have an estimated cost for marking those boundaries?
Not yet.
All right.
That is something we need to determine once we have a firm idea of the boundary. And really, it gets back to coming back to ABC and and looking at the statute of, all right, how specific do we need to get? What's reasonable?
And yeah, and I'm seeing down in Topeka, like they just have it marked on the curbs and, I mean, you know, bucket of paint and and a few hours of labor probably would would do it. But, you know, just something that we we want to keep in mind.
When we come back with the actual ordinance, if that's the direction, we would, we would have a lot, a better firmer idea of what that cost would be. This is just again, some of the things that we would, uh, again, if if you give the direction tonight, we do need to adopt a CCA ordinance that outlines uh, downtown. It'll outline um, the time and the dates, uh, the requirements that we would need to provide. It would include the city as that permit holder. Again, back to the demarcation and signage which we just talked about. We will need to probably, at the same time, amend our special events with alcohol ordinance, just so that they don't conflict and we can clean those up. Uh, and then education to the businesses and the public is important part of this too. The ordinance would also address identifying the Aggieville District and how they could approach event-specific CCA events. And Gina and Dennis are both here to provide any input or feedback or answer any questions from the conversations they've had with the businesses in their districts. And we've also, of course, been having conversations with Riley County Police Department, uh, who's here as well.
Are there comments from the public?
Do we need to take a vote to allow public comment? Mayor McCullough.
We don't have to, it says, um, comment from the public related to the item is loud.
I don't know if you actually have questions of me, but I wanted to bring a couple of um, things to just your attention as you're considering this. And I would also like to add into your thought processes about the farmer's market. The concern that I have would be that that parking lot is also used for staging the K-State Homecoming Parade. And staging the Christmas Parade. So that would effectively turn those areas into a tailgate party. And I don't know if that's a good idea. Uh, this is something that we would definitely need to really, really think about, especially if it's a continued um, time period. Of eight AM till eleven PM, Monday through Sunday. Um, and then if there is a connection street, how that's, how that's going to work. I just, that just makes me nervous a little bit.
I think Jamie brought up a good point, is that in the ordinance, uh, or in the statute that allows these. Um, it's pretty clear that the consumers have to be drinking out of a marked cup from a vendor in the in.
But if they can walk from the chef or wherever to that parking lot, then that is.
Fair point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that would happen. So I just, I want to make sure that we're really, I'm the unintended consequences person and I'm constantly thinking about those things. And that was really the first thing that popped into my mind about those parades.
That's a good point.
I tend to think of, um, I mean, I I'm not, I don't really even drink and I don't know how I became the expert on this, but I've been to a lot of CCAs. Um, and really, when in looking at them, they sort of just become part of the landscape. They kind of blend into the background, they're they're there, um, really just to promote social connection and kind of gathering amongst smaller groups. This would be really, really different than a special event with alcohol like we have done in the past. Um, where we've had this closed streets, we've hired security, we've worked with ABC, we've worked with RCPD. This is not the same thing. This is, this is more along the lines of, um, think, think about promenade on points. That that would be a really close example for those of you who who've ever attended that wine event. If you were allowed to to actually take that glass of wine out of that business and walk down the sidewalk to the next business. This, that would be more like what we're talking about. I think, um, we've done these kinds of things really slowly over the last eight years or so. We started with beer gardens in Blue Earth Plaza. Um, we've done the dining platforms that have really taught our our establishments, our restaurants and our bars. How to implement the the things that keep them safe and patrons safe. And so we've gotten really, really good at this, we've dipped our toe into a lot of these kinds of things. I just really think that the CCA for downtown, it's a different demographic. It's a a price point that sort of keeps our our college-age friends from really partaking. Um, and our demographics are very clearly young professionals, families and um, early retirees. I think, I think all of those things should be taken into consideration.
Gina, did you sign in and give your names if at the beginning?
Is is there no?
Always with you, Jared.
Sorry, I was under the understanding that I was just part of the.
Well, yeah.
Well, I, it is a little confusing, if you want another three minutes, you can have it. Is there anybody else who wants to speak to this issue? Commissioners?
I mean, I'm I'm personally very excited about this, it's, I mean, I think it's a little behind the times, a lot of other communities have already went to this. And I, I mean, I just think this will be great for for downtown and I appreciate Gina and and the group that's worked through it, RCPD, everybody. Um, I'm I'm all for moving forward with something.
Mayor McCullough, I think you have one more member of the um, public who wants to address you.
Yes, please come up, sorry. Got to yell at me.
Hi, my name's Denise. Um, my husband and I, Rick, we live over at uh, Tenth and Leavenworth. We walk downtown quite a bit. What I noticed is we would go down there, we have some friends that um, work down there and we'd meet. And what I noticed was when they started closing off the streets, it became robust. It was, we saw people down there we hadn't seen before. There were people with their kids in strollers and their dogs. And we were like, wow, you're here, you're here. And it it just became such a vibrant, robust time. And and I actually went into shops I'd never even been in, because I ran into a girlfriend and was like, what are you looking for? And I was like, oh, we got to get some flowers for a wreath. She's like, oh, come here. So what I learned in just a one day of when they closed it off, that it felt like a town. And I've only been here almost six years now, it bursted with activity, it was alive. And I'd like to see it keep going. Should I sign this?
Yeah, I agree with Jamie, I'm all for it, the boundaries that are there, come up with the details so we can look at it. And um, I kind of lean towards just a special event for the farmer's market, but you know, see what they have in mind.
Yeah, with the farmer's market, I'm assuming we could probably do something similar to what we did for Manhattan Brewing. So that they're not having to put in an application every week or every month or something. Just um, try and make that a little bit more streamlined for them, but um, yeah, I think this makes a lot of sense.
I concur.
Well, I have to be the odd man out, um, I certainly am not a teetotaller. But um, I I really worry about the liability. This, the city's putting their name on the line and all is very pleasant and nice till we have some major thing. Particularly if if traffic's going to be going back and forth through it. And um, yeah, it's covered under our policy now, but let's say we have a couple people who get run over down there. And will the insurance company either jack up our insurance or not carry it? And I'm not quite sure why we always, always have to drink with every occasion. Quite frankly, the farmer's market to me is the place you go in the morning and you get some interesting coffee, you get some interesting. Don't know that you need a daiquiri at eight o'clock in the morning exactly. And so often, um, we've become such an alcohol-centered. And I have no problem with the with the third Thursdays or the first Fridays. But I think that the downtown Manhattan community should come to us and ask and we'll say, that sounds great. And I do think that the street should be cut, closed off if we're going to have people wandering about. And definitely you'll go into some stores, but I don't think the lady at the bridal shop wants you to come in with your red wine or brown shoe fit. I mean, I don't know, I just, I'm I'm sorry, but I just think this is something that really should be asked for and permitted. As sort of a special event, not just that every day you can wander around with your your cup, so.
Mayor McCullough, as you are a dissenting voice here, I think that the consensus of the remaining commissioners is to ask the city to move forward with the steps as you've indicated. Um, have that discussion with the board of the of the farmer's market. Um, and you know, as Danielle has pointed out with several other instances of ordinances, we've considered. If this is not successful and if it is uh, more problematic than we anticipate at this time, we can rescind an ordinance, so our.
So we will move on to Aggieville District. Area Chamber of Commerce Economic Growth Plan Strategy Discussion.
All right. See, they say I have no technology abilities, they just don't know me very well, right?
Why don't you tell us who you are still?
Yeah, good evening Commissioners.
Folks at home, though.
Yeah, good evening Commissioners, I'm uh, Jason Smith, President and CEO of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. It's great to be here, um, it's been a few months, so it's good to see everybody. I do want to say, uh, since I have the chance to be up here in front of you and may not be again for a while. How much, uh, throughout this presentation, we're going to talk about a lot of things. I just want to tell you over the last several months, and actually, the whole time I've been here. But how much we appreciate your staff and all the work that they've done helping move forward some projects that we'll hopefully get to talk about over the next several weeks. Um, between Danielle and Jason and Stephanie and Aaron. And we just have so much going on and we can always count on them to to be great partners. And I just want to take the opportunity to say that because I want people at home to know that, right? We have, we have a great team and and you all should be very proud. So we've, we've talked, yeah, so we've talked about some of these things um, over the last several months. I'm not going to go super in-depth uh, into the growth strategy. I will tell you that uh, growmhk.org has all the information in-depth, so you can look or. So you can look, or people at home that may be watching can look. All the things we're gonna talk about, the data, it's backed up, and, and there's a lot more description about, about some of the recommendations and the things, specifically that, that are part of the strategy. We're happy to go delve more into things today if you have questions, but I'm gonna take more of a high-level approach, so we can talk about the metrics and some of the other things after this. So, about a year and a half ago now, I guess, we had a group of, of our leadership that came to us and, and said, they had some concerns about some things they were seeing in their own business, and, and some of the trends that were going on. At the same time, you all were going through some challenges in your own budgeting processes. And so, we decided we hadn't updated our economic development strategy in a while, and it was, it was important to take a look at what were some of the external factors that were facing the community, and what could we do in a short-term period? Cause normally economic development strategies are five to seven years. We wanted to take a more one-to-three-year approach to that process, and say, what could we do as a community to turn around some of the trends that, that we thought we were seeing, and, and validate those and make sure that, that those in fact were what were going on. And, and again, we talked about some of these in December. But as part of the economic assessment, so, well, so we hired a consultant, who also was the individual who worked on the Regional Re Management Project back in 2018. He also helped write the Framework for Growth for State of Kansas in 2020. And so he's very familiar with Manhattan, very familiar with Kansas. And we brought him in and said, hey, can you, can you help us out through this process and, and take a look? His name is Matt Tarleton, some of you have met him. Matt's an economist from Georgia, and, and does a great job, and I've known Matt for a while. But, so the first thing Matt did was do an economic assessment on, on Manhattan. So just real quick on the positives, these shouldn't be a big surprise, but people generally feel very strongly that, about Manhattan in a very positive way, and appreciate the quality of life that they have. In fact, Matt said he's never seen scores as high as they were on quality of life. He thought that was very impressive for a community like ours to, to have those kind of scores from our own population. We have a youthful population, we have a highly impactful technical school. MATC receives national rankings number one last year, I guess, by Wallet Hub. There's a lot of opportunities in R and D and entrepreneurial activity, particularly as it surrounds Kansas State. And we see a lot of that happening now and expanding under the leadership of President Lynton. And then over the last 10 years, we've seen a lot of growth in professional and scientific jobs, which has kinda gone under the radar a little bit, some of that's MBAF. But there's some other pockets where we've seen some growth, accounting is one, where there's been a substantial amount of growth as a percentage in Manhattan. But it's, and, and it's quite startling, actually, if you take a look at the slides and you see, I think it's like net fifteen hundred new jobs over the last 10 years in professional and scientific jobs, which is pretty remarkable for a community our size. In terms of some of the challenges, we have had flat job and population growth. We went into the factors that surrounded that last December, the reduction of students, reduction in soldiers, a lot of things out of our control, but that just happened. But, and, and again, as we've said, the fact that we've stayed flat in light of those things is truly remarkable. We've done that in a lot of cases through public projects. We've had a lot of significant, large public projects, including for Riley, including MBAF, including North Campus Corridor, including downtown redevelopment. Those things have helped sustain us, and, and very creative in the fact that we were able to do that. We do, even compared to communities our size with universities, have a much more reliance on the public sector than, than nearly any place in the country. We are at about three times what the expected in terms of location quotients, employment in the public sector for communities our size, which is pretty substantial even compared to places like Ames, Morgantown, Stillwater, smaller university cities. We have limited assets for development readiness. That just means, at the time, we didn't have a lot of buildings, we, we don't have a lot of business park sites. That has limited our capacity, our ability to submit on projects. And then we're seeing our cost factors in Manhattan increase at a higher rate than our peers, particularly as it relates to housing, taxes, and some other areas. So one of the things that, that came out of this is just this idea that, as you all look at budgets, and you think about, okay, we don't have enough revenues to cover our expenses, that, is that, is that a spending problem, is it a, is it a, is it a revenue problem? And, and we believe very strongly that, that over the last 10 years, we have a revenue problem, right? That we are seeing, that, then that is directly tied to the fact that we have not added people, we've not added jobs, and we've not added the, new payroll into the community that's helped cover some of the natural increases in costs, right? I mean, the cost of everything goes up year over year. So if you're not, if your revenues aren't increasing at a level of your costs, then you all have to make the tough decision of, do we cut services and decrease the quality of life for our community, or do we raise taxes on the people that are still here? And so what we've said is, we would really like to address the revenue problem. And we do that through growth, and we do it through growth in people, we do it through growth in jobs, and we do it through growth in salaries that are paid to those people. However, growth for growth's sake is not necessarily a great strategy. And you've seen places where growth has outpaced how the community's been able to accommodate that. And so we wanted to make sure that we looked at what we defined as desirable growth. So, we, economic workforce and fiscal sustainability. So export-oriented jobs, we call those primary employers, primary jobs, base jobs. Those are jobs that are at employers where the money that's paying those salaries comes in from outside of Manhattan. That's new money into the economy. So, there's a number of examples, but a manufacturer, or a place like Civic Plus, or Kansas State. I mean, and those are all examples where you have export-oriented jobs. We need more above-average wages, so we need, we need jobs in areas that pay above the average wage to make a difference in, in what we're doing. We need to diversify the tax base. I believe we have forty-four percent of, of the tax base in, in Riley County that is, is it forty, it's forty percent, I think. But that's, that is not on the tax roll. And that's not as a temporary, that's as, as a permanent, we are, we are a non-taxable entity. We have to improve the approachability of housing. That is starting to impact employers and their ability to attract people here, which means if they have other options, they may choose to expand other places. And we have to, and as along those lines, we have to be able to attract and retain residents if we're going to attract and retain jobs. So to do that, as we've discussed here before, and you're gonna see in some of the metrics, we have to know what we're gonna measure to see if we're doing a good job. So, job growth and percentage in high-wage industries, and we'll talk about what those are in a minute. But are we growing in the industries that are paying the higher wages? Distribution of tax revenue by source, so you all are heavily reliant on sales tax. We would, we would like to see more property tax base, so that you have, you're able to draw more on your property tax. That's a little more sustainable, not higher rates, more base. We need income and wage growth. What are, how are we doing in terms of our, our housing supply? So, we historically have seen a healthy housing supply be about six months. In the last couple of years, we've been below two months. So that is, that makes things very challenging for people who want to move here, to live here. And then our net migration numbers have, have not been very good. And so we are going to measure those and see if we can turn those around. So as we talked about high-wage sectors, these are, these are those, agriculture, equipment and technology, and animal health. Those are areas where we're really leveraging some of the, the expertise and technology of Kansas State University. They are kinda at the forefront of working with those companies. And, and you've seen some, some of these companies open small offices at, at, on the edge. And so how do we get a greater presence from those companies? Biomanufacturing, biosecurity, and food safety is something we've been working very strongly on for the last three years. We are starting to make incredible inroads. There's not a national conference we go to anymore where people don't recognize Manhattan as being a leader in biomanufacturing, biosecurity. And we have some examples of that, but I think, I think that's great. And we'll can, I think we will start seeing fruit of that labor over the next couple of years. And then equipment, machine, and metal fabrication is kind of a, something that a lot of people don't know that we have, but we do have between Junction City and Womigo, and then some, some things here in Manhattan. We do have some expertise in that, particularly as it relates to training. So we're able to, to train people in those spaces fairly quickly. And we are really engaged right now in trying to develop, and Darren may talk about this in a minute when he's talking about metrics, but trying to develop more leads in that space, particularly as we see Caterpillar leaving the, Womigo. We think there's some tremendous, I mean, again, it's not, wasn't a great, a great situation, but that creates opportunities to potentially attract attention and new employers. And so we have already generated a pretty substantial amount of leads in that space, and we'll continue to, to work very hard in that. The last two are not typical targets for economic development organizations, to, to be honest. But we see those as being significant quality-of-life issues for Manhattan. And so we have to improve our healthcare, and not that it's bad, but we have to make sure that our healthcare is strong if we're going to attract residents. That's something, people look at schools, people look at healthcare, those are two items that people look at when they're determining where they're going to live. And that has been an area that we have seen some progress, particularly as it relates to increasing capacity in nursing students. We partnered with MATC and the Community Foundation, and, and our, our healthcare providers. And we've doubled capacity of CNA and RNs over the, programming over the last year through some philanthropic efforts, and so that's exciting. And then construction trades is an area that we see as a way to reduce the cost of housing. Is it, one of the, one of the areas that our home builders identified as being a problem in, in increasing costs for housing is the lack of workers. And so that's why we support it and, and appreciate your support of the expansion to MATC. That has doubled the capacity of several construction trade programs, and we think will allow growth in that sector and potentially reduction in some of the costs, or at least flattening of some of the costs in, in home construction. So, what do we do about these things? The first thing is, and this is something we are, we are implementing at the chamber as well, cause sometimes it's real easy to talk yourself out of things, but is implementing a yes-if culture instead of a no-because. And this is something that's resonated with our leadership, and we, we talk about it a lot, and, and particularly as it relates to, to opportunities that we have at the chamber, whether it's economic development or tourism. And so these are, these, this is a mindset that we're gonna talk a lot about over the next two or three years as we approach you all and other entities on specific opportunities. In terms of the strategic framework, we broke everything down into four areas. Investments, policies, processes, and initiatives. And again, we really wanted to focus on the one-to-three-year. So, there's, there's some other things that we also are working on, but these are really the, the imperative growth strategies for a one-to-three-year period. So, in terms of investment, we have to identify a site to attract projects or a project of regional significance. This, and this is something that we have to discuss as a community. This may or may not be in Manhattan. Quite frankly, developing large sites in Manhattan's proper is very challenging. And we all know the terrain challenges, we know we're, we're bordered on the north by Kansas State, we're bordered on the west by Fort Riley, we're bordered on the south by the river. I mean, it gets super challenging to try to do a 250-acre site within the city limits. Are there opportunities with some of our, our partnering communities, our partnering counties to, to do something in those areas? I can tell you, Commissioner Mata obviously worked at a pretty large employer in Junction City and, and lived here. And there's going to be positives to Manhattan for regional growth opportunities. And if that helps Manhattan, then that's something we need to think about. If we think we can do something in Manhattan, that's great. But it, it is, it is going to be a significant challenge to try to develop a site that large. So, we're gonna be working with professionals to help us look at the entire region. Are there sites that, that make sense, and the cost to develop those sites, and then the opportunities that might come from that? Utilize programs to develop needing, needed housing. Appreciate all your efforts in that space. You all have been the leaders in the community in that. We are very interested in making sure that all the programs, local, state, federal, available to increase housing in Manhattan are taken advantage of. And, and obviously, you, you've heard us talk about that, and you'll hear us talk before about that later. And again, appreciate, particularly Stephanie, I think, has become the community leader on that. And I'm not sure where we'd be without Stephanie, so thank you, Stephanie, for your work. In terms of policies, these are some areas where, one is city-specific and one is chambers and city. But really, and, and, and I'm not the code expert, so, but really, how can we align our codes and policies with the existing planning documents, including your strategic plan, including the strategic plans around the community? Are they aligned? There's some areas where, where we feel like there could be some improvement, or at least our consultant feels like there could be some improvements there. Glad to continue that dialogue, and we're discussing that right now with Jason and Danielle, and, and, and where we can help with that. Update incentive programs, this is, this is an area that I think as we've worked through the last month or so, we all kinda came together and figured out, you know, this, this is probably an area that we could make a difference early on. We talked about, to be fair, Jason brought this to the commission a couple of years ago. We supported it, and at that time, it was determined that, that that was not an area that that particular commission wanted to go in. But we think at this point, it's probably time to take another look at that, particularly with limited resources we have, and make sure that, that, that we're prudent with our dollars that we have going forward, and, and understand the impact of that return on investment with incentive. So, excited to be part of that. I think Danielle is interested in that, we're interested in that. So, I think that's a great dialogue we can have. Establish development goals, performance and metrics around time and efficiency. I think there's some things moving forward on that space that we're happy to support, hope that, that, that we can see that. Development coordinator is, is a, is a position that we've seen in other communities that has been very effective. You know, I, I almost call it the chief, it's like a chief revenue officer, right? I mean, if we think about development as being new revenue for the city, and having somebody who's micro-focused on that as, as their number-one goal, we've seen has turned into results in other communities. Happy to continue having that dialogue. That's not a short-term, obviously, goal, that's something moving forward. And if there's, if there's an alternative to that, that gets us to the same place, I think our leadership is incredibly interested in, in discussing that, too. The last two initiatives are pretty chamber-focused, and, and we're already implementing proactive lead generation strategy. Darren may talk a little bit about that tonight, we'll certainly talk about it when we do our mid-year report. And then how can we develop better research and business information? We've had some preliminary conversations with Kansas State, including some things they're doing with K-State 105 that, that, that we think could address some of the challenges we have there. So, with that, I will answer any questions. If there's no questions, I'm happy to.
Questions, go ahead.
Yeah, so you mentioned.
I'm sorry, I was supposed to have comments in the public before I do, it says here.
Hello, good evening. I signed in on another piece of paper when I got here.
Yeah, I got you.
She whistled away. Okay, my name is Kirk Crabtree. I am with the, live at 322-15th Street in Ogden, and I'm a member of the Riley County Rural Economic Development Advisory Board. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the chamber's economic growth plan, and to highlight the vital relationship between the city and the county in the area of economic development. As we all know, economic growth in our region does not simply start and stop at Manhattan city limit signs. And by strengthening the economic development relationship between the city and the county, we can create a more unified and effective approach to the growth that the chamber has envisioned and described. Thank you.
Whoa, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, Peter, your.
Okay, so you have called out the, what we've talked about with property taxes and needing to, to expand our property tax base. How do we find balance with that? But also, what I have seen this last year or so, is that almost every new building that gets put up is asking for a tax abatement. And I understand the, the, the theory behind that being a long-term investment, but we're talking about, you, like you mentioned, this is a three-to-five-year plan. So how do we, how do we kinda square those two things together?
Yeah, I wish there was an easy answer to that, right? You know, I think, I think one of the things that you look at is, it's okay, ten years, we've been fairly stagnant. And so think about it from a business perspective, is if your business is stagnant, you don't go, okay, we're not, our sales are stagnant, how do we increase our sales? Well, we're just gonna double down and raise our prices, right? I mean, you try to figure out ways to, to maybe, loss leaders, I mean, there's a variety of, of strategies that go into that. And I think those are some things that you have to think about through that process. I think just cause you make a decision that we're gonna incent this project today, five years from now, you might not, because five years from now, there may be enough activity going on that the market is coming in and recognizing that, and doing those things on their own, right? But for right now, we know, we, we know we need to kickstart our housing, right? Because we know we're not, we're not seeing a, a, any spec housing right now, without, that's not being incented. We know that we're, we're gonna, we need more primary employers, because we are not seeing growth in our primary employers. So, so what can we do to kickstart those things? I will tell you, and I, there, there have been several projects in the last year that have, that have been referred to us by the city and others about, would you support a tax abatement for this? And we've said, no. And they've moved forward with their project, right? Because what we. Because what we try to do is apply a but for principle to these things and say, is this really going to make a difference or is this just something you're asking for because it's there? And, and I know that's a value judgment, right? And that's something that as commissioners, you have to do on a lot of things. And I, I hate that. I wish I could give you, you know, the answer to say A plus B equals C, but a lot of times it's just a value judgment. And, and I've said this before to you all, I, I feel very strongly that we should be applying but for principles to all incentives.
Can't not laugh at that term, by the way.
Yeah.
Jason, can you, as, as Mr. Crabtree just mentioned, we're not operating in a vacuum when we talk about this kind of development. It's got to be regional. We've, we've heard you speak in the past about a site for a significant regional enterprise, which might be in Gary County, might be in Pot County. To what extent have you been able to engage with the Riley County Commissioners in having these discussions?
Yeah, I mean, so Riley County Commissioners are investors in Advantage Manhattan and we appreciate that. We have, we have worked with them pretty significantly on some opportunities west to, to expand what, what I'm going to call the, the airport business park, right? And they've expressed interest in, in helping with us if those opportunities arise. And, and so I, I do think they're very supportive of that kind of, of investment, whether it's there. We've talked to him before about Ogden. We've talked to him before about Riley. I do think there's opportunities, but, but again, you have to have a clear, you can't go out and just spend $10 million without knowing whether there's going to be demand for it. And, and when you talk about developing a site of substance, you're, you're looking at a seven to $10 million expenditure, depending on where utilities are and those kinds of things. So you've, I want to make sure we're very clear in those conversations that we feel very strongly that there's an actual opportunity to recoup those dollars and you're not just spending $10 million on a wish and a prayer. So, but they, they've been very receptive as have historically Potawatomi County. They've been very receptive to those things too.
I'm not going to ask you to tell me tonight, but when you're brought up codes and policies that need to change, is we've heard that a lot, but we don't get a lot of specifics on what it is that needs to be changed. And I think that's what we really need in zoning. I think we do get some specifics, usually density that, that comes about, but on codes and other policies, I think we're very receptive to change things. We just need to hear exactly what those are.
And I agree, and that, that has historically been my experience in working with the staff. And we have encouraged our development community to come to the table and be specific with, with their items. They have in some instances and, and so hopefully we can, we can talk about those over the next several weeks and, and hear some potential solutions to that.
Jamie?
I have a couple of things. One, we have had the airport business park now for 30 years and it's not full. And we put things in there, quite frankly, that just to have things in there that really aren't optimal use of that. And I know one issue is, is like, is evergreen getting enough energy to it? And so are we really, can't we sit down with evergreen? Can't we sit down with, can't we really zero in on the kind of, of business that would use that place? Because it just makes me very sad to see it just sitting there. And there are even some buildings, I believe they're empty out there. Is the.
I don't, I think, I think Kansas State has a building they use for storage, which isn't optimal, but it's.
And that's Kansas State who's not going to pay any property tax and just fill up, you know? And, and I just feel like we, we need to be more innovative. I mean, when I hear your discussion, and I know there's a lot of research that went into it, but I, I'm pretty sure I would hear that same thing in chambers of commerce presenting to maybe a hundred other medium sized towns, you know? It's the things that we do in the kind of town that we are with educated people and that kind of thing. I think, I would like to see us sort of get outside the box, and I hate that, try, but, you know, what kind of NBAF proximity types of things? Could we really put someplace besides in the foundation building, which of course doesn't pay property tax? But they pay on, yes, the, the company would pay in it, but at any rate.
Can, can I answer real quick, one, one comment on that? So actually the, and, and we can, we can, I, we agree a hundred percent. It's not utilized to the extent it should be, but the, the airport park is nearly actually full, other than some small sites, including two sites that, that were purchased that nothing was ever built on and we cannot get them back. And so, and so going forward, and, and we've had these, this dialogue that we shouldn't be selling sites at the business park without some sort of requirement that they have to build within a certain period of time or, or get sold back to the, to the city. I, I can't answer for what happened before I was here. I, I can, I can tell you that we are, the economy's changed, right? COVID changed a lot. And we were, we were very focused on office and retail pre-COVID. And, and so, but, but we went from having probably three to four office potential projects a year to we've had one since COVID happened. There, there's, now that may change, right? I mean, as more people go back to work, that may change, but we, there's a lot more now centered on manufacturing because people are onshoring. There's, there's just a lot more momentum in manufacturing. The other thing is, the thing that Kansas State does best is product improvement, product development. At the end of the day, the things that spin out of Kansas State are manufacturing kinds of projects. And so we have to have places for those things to land. I think we've done a fairly good job over the last couple of years. We've, we now have sites that we can at least submit on. We didn't have that five years ago, over 25 acres. We've had, because of the foresight of the commission, we now have building K, which we think will lead to, to new projects. So buildings typically attract users. Same thing happened when, when the brewery went out at the, at the airport. All of a sudden you end up with Bev Hub in there and now Bev Hub is in that building. They're in McCall, they have 50, 60 employees. I mean, those are the kind of things I think we're talking about is just we, we need to think about what investments we can make to attract people. And you're, and you're right, that it's, it's not rocket science. It's, those are, the things that work in other places are things that work in every place.
Absolutely.
But, but, but we do have to be more thoughtful about the kind of businesses that we attract. And we, I agree with.
And I think we have to have a very varied approach to many things like housing. I know Topeka's been somewhat successful in helping people with down payments, which has attracted some of our construction workers over there. At least that's what construction workers tell me here. But I just, I would love to see that airport business park just brimming with things since it has been sitting there many, many, many years and was, on the other hand, Susan came to the regional planning organization last Friday and I think we are really thinking regionally now. And the new economic development person from Pot County is a real go getter. And, you know, what, what improves the average wage in Womago is good for Manhattan.
For sure.
Because we have most of the stores where they want to shop. And so I think the provincial sort of hesitancy that we'd had in the past is, is really gone. And we know Junction's got access, fast access to Interstate 40, I mean, 70. So, you know, I think there's a lot of things going on.
We agree, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one more.
Oh, sure.
Can you, can you talk a little bit more about this development coordinator? And I mean, I know you said it's kind of a bigger conversation, but kind of what, what are you envisioning? Who pays for that? That kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of different ways to approach it. I'll just give you the experience I have, right? So when we were in, when I was in Lincoln and, and I was, worked for the chamber as the, as the vice president of economic development, similar problems have, were identified. They, the, there, they have a strong mayor, so the mayor is the chief administrator. The mayor hired a person specifically to oversee, in fact, he took him off my staff, but took a person to oversee the development process. It was somebody who was familiar to everybody in the development areas of the city that he'd, he was retired, he'd retired from the utility company. So they all knew him and respected him. And he was able to bring, I, I used to call him bilingual because he, he was very pro-business because that's what he did for the utility company. But he also was very pro-development because he was friends with all the people that worked in those departments. And so he could, he was able to kind of connect that and then was able to sit down with his boss and say, these are the kind of things that, that I think, the process improvements that I think will make, will actually make a difference. They didn't change a whole lot, but they made some very specific changes. The other thing it was is when there was a challenge, you could call somebody and that person was automatically on top of it. I, look, I, that, I think somehow that's been considered to be a criticism. It shouldn't be. It, it, it just, in our, in our minds and what we see in other places, and, and Matt brought it up, it's a way to, to expedite, have somebody that's specifically response, responsible for those kind of initiatives and those things tend to get done quicker. The other thing we've talked about is, is that something, and again, I don't, you know, based on some other things that may come out in the next few weeks, that may or not be the case today, but is that something that could come out of the jobs fund? I mean, that's something that we have talked about in terms of, of the 20% of the, of the Recovery Act, because that obviously would be, again, development is a, now a big piece of our economic development strategy. And so we would consider that to be that.
So when we talk development, are we, are we talking about like the actual nuts and bolts of putting together, of, of the construction, that kind of development and like kind of shepherding the business through all of that process? Is that what the, the development coordinator would do?
So I will tell you this, when we have a big project and, and we engage with, with, there are people that, that engage in the city, it is a great process. It doesn't always work that way, depending on how much, how big the project is, whether, who they're engaged with, those kinds of things. That's not a knock on anybody, it's just what we get reported back. And so how can we make it, how can we make it the same for everybody?
Sure, okay.
I, I mean, I think just to speak to that development coordinator, in my opinion, it feels a little redundant or a little, sometimes too many people doesn't, doesn't actually make the process smoother. But I do think in addressing more regional look, I think exploring options that way and not, not city focused. And I think just wanting to.
And it could be somebody that's already on staff and you just shift duties and those kinds of things, right? It doesn't necessarily have to be a new person. It could just be who's, who's responsible for making sure this process? And again, if, if there's some changes that get implemented and, and, and these, those, say, we're going to do this instead, I, I think that's a reasonable thing to discuss too. So it's just something that's worked in other place, aims was in other place. Norman, we had it, we had one in Norman. These are things, it's fairly common in, in places like, like Manhattan. But if there's other solutions, I think we're open to that.
So what are the major deficiencies when companies come in and say, oh, it looks good, but I don't think so?
Oh, there's, there's a lot, right? I mean, it's, some of it's big, some, I mean, one of the biggest challenges we have again is just sites. It's just we, you know, it's just hard, physically, it's just hard to develop in Manhattan for a variety of reasons. So that's something that there's nothing really any of us can do anything about unless we just want to spend a lot of money. But I, you know, if, if, if somebody comes here and looks, we usually do really well. The challenge is just getting somebody here, which is why things like the spec building program, you know, having available sites is really important. But there's just some things like, we need 200 acres. I mean, we had a deal that specifically called us and said, hey, we're interested in looking at Manhattan, you know, and they walked through the reasons and we need 200 acre sites. It's like, well, we just don't have that, right? And, and, and we can't magically make that appear. That's going to take a lot of time, effort and resources if we want to go down that path.
It wasn't Costco, was it?
No, it wasn't.
We would find them 200 acres.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's, that brings up a good point. You know, things like Costco, things like Trader Joe's, things, all the things we hear, all the Red Lobster, all the things we hear the time that we need, look at, look at the things that we, we have on our K P I's, right? Which is what's the average median income? What's your population growth? Those are the two major factors in attracting those kind of people. And if we don't start impacting tho, those K P I's, getting Costco, getting Trader Joe's, getting Red Lobster is going to be virtually impossible. That's why this is important to us and we hope is, we, you know, we believe is important to you all too.
So any more feedback on, there's no action required on this issue?
So is it okay if I introduce the next presentation?
Certainly.
Okay.
And that's going to be the Chamber of Commerce Performance Metrics Discussion.
So as part of this discussion and part of our contract discussion last fall, we talked about formalizing some more perform, I mean, we had like a three-page performance metrics that we all agreed was not particularly helpful. And so we've been working with a committee that included Commissioner Adamcheck, Commissioner Opelt and a couple of people on our leadership team, as well as Darren and Marcia. And they're going to present those tonight, as well as Marcia's going to present her quarterly report. So I think we have Darren scheduled to run through the economic development metrics next, and then Marcia will do the metrics and her quarterly report. And then we'll all be here to answer questions.
We asked for measurable outcomes.
Correct. Give me a moment here, I'll switch this over. All right. Good evening Commissioners, Mayor and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk. Switch over here.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm going to switch here where I can reach, reach the appropriate buttons. My name is Darren Soldan, Executive Vice President of Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, Director of Economic Development. As Jason alluded to, this is the follow-on to conversations that happened last fall and then a, a series of meetings, including Commissioners, city staff, leadership from the chamber and, and chamber staff to really try to boil down this metrics piece. This is a conversation on the economic development side that is, is looking at a, several different perspectives. One is we have an economic development committee made up of, of investors, which, which the city has a spot on and they want to see activity metrics and they want to understand our sales funnel and they want to understand what work is being done and, and how to measure that work and, and, and assess that work. There is obviously the K P I's that Jason alluded to from the growth plan. And, and so those are encapsulating this as well. And then there's the relationship we have with the city of Manhattan and the Contract for Economic Development Services. And again, being able to come in, report activity, report successes, be able to talk about why things didn't work out or, or, you know, what, what external and internal factors are ultimately impacting the numbers or, or the, the projects that are coming forth. And so keep in mind, keeping in mind those three, three perspectives. This first page that we're going to look at, and, and so if the, if the, the metric spreadsheets that you provided as part of the packet, the first page is really community metrics on the economic development. The second tab, which, which for the purposes of, of printing or PDFs is split up into, into two pages. The second tab is the internal activity component of this. So, and that covers business attraction. It covers our existing business retention and expansion efforts. And then it covers our entrepreneurship and small business efforts. So we're going to start with this community metrics piece. And these are more broad looking components. Some of these came directly from metrics that were being tracked as part of our existing economic development contract with the city, but they're really meant to align very closely with those key performance indicators from the growth plan, which again are job growth and percentage of jobs in high wage industries, distribution of tax revenue, income and wage growth, months of housing supply, net migration. So the table that's presented here covers each one of those metrics and figured this was easier to look at it this way than, than navigating around an Excel spreadsheet, but covers each one of those metrics, how frequently those are reported. We're reporting this information as frequently as we can get it from the data sources and then which data source it's coming from. So these are, these are items. The difference here compared to the, the next set of metrics we're going to look at is again, community wide, more broad, a lot of these are annual. They tie back to the K P I's, but to this point have not set specific numbers associated or targets, longer term targets. That was part of the discussion with that group that, that a couple of Commissioners were involved in, but, but there, to this point has not been a desire to go and, and set specific future looking targets there, where that is the case with some of the, some of the internal components. So we're looking at labor force. We're looking at months of housing supply, commercial investment. So we're looking at labor force, we're looking at months of housing supply, commercial investment. Um, responding to the question Mayor that you had, um, for Jason regarding some of the challenges, um, labor force size is, is, is a frequent challenge. I can, I can speak to that as having been involved in, in, obviously, we've got several, uh, significant real estate assets on the market right now. Um, way more than we have had at any given time in this community, uh, or in this region in, in quite a while if ever. And when you have companies from across the country and, and international companies looking, uh, this is a labor market that's smaller than oftentimes they're looking in if they're in major metro areas. So, growing that labor market, uh, more people, more jobs is, is definitely important. Um, the months of housing supply is, is a, is a, um, regional MSA, three-county number. Uh, that's obviously, especially in the wintertime, getting, ticking down below two the last couple of years, uh, which is that number. If you, if you talk to, uh, uh, real estate, uh, folks and economists should be in probably in that six-month range, uh, to be a balanced market. And so we're two months of, of supply at this point. And, and that goes up a little bit in the summertime when there's more listings and down a bit in the wintertime. But then the commercial investment is a number that's tracking city Manhattan, uh, commercial building, building permits. The jobs numbers are coming from Lightcast, just to give you a reference, what Lightcast is, is a comprehensive labor market data analysis tool. Um, we actually access through the Flunhills Regional Council, so good, good, uh, regional effort there. Um, that a number of economic development, uh, organizations are accessing that data. It is, it is some of the best labor market data you can use. We use it for business attraction, we use it working with companies that are looking here to deep dive into their specific needs. Look at what job postings and salary ranges are, uh, for the types of jobs they'd be hiring. It's a really, really good tool. From that, we're pulling information in specific, um, two-digit, two-digit NICS codes, some of which you see there. Manufacturing, those professional scientific technical services, healthcare, construction, areas that line up as well as we can at that level uh, with those, uh, with those target industries. Then we're taking the total within those and comparing it to the total overall labor force, um, or total number of jobs to look at what percentage of jobs are in that, in that, um, um, in those target industries. With the idea being that over time we can track that, the more jobs we have in those target industries means that, that that goal is being, that goal was being, um, achieved. And we're driving that in the right direction. And then from a wages standpoint, we're looking, tracking both average and median wages. And these are average, or these are annual numbers that are coming from the Kansas Department of Labor. Uh, population, net migration numbers, those are coming from, um, ultimately census data. Uh, Lightcast is able to track some specifics about where people are coming from, where they're going to, which, which can be of value to us. And then we participate along with hundreds of other communities around the country through Council of Community and Economic Research in a quarterly cost of living analysis. So, George Canton and our staff, uh, goes and collects data across a very significant, um, number of, of items, um, in the community. And, and so do people in other communities all over the country. Uh, that then is compiled, uh, by the Council for Community Economic Research into a, into a, an index which we tend to range in the, in the ninety to ninety-two when one hundred is, is, um, is national average. And so that's reflected as well. And then we're tracking within sites and buildings, again, the importance of, of having inventory. We're tracking, um, we're tracking industrial sites, buildings, office buildings and lab space. And so, uh, what that looks like then in practice, this is what the spreadsheet for those community metrics looks like on a monthly basis. This is included in our, uh, monthly reports that we submit to the city. And so, uh, every month there is a link in that report that goes directly to this document as well as the next couple of pages. And you can look at, there's a, there's the past two years plus the current year. And then there's some numbers, uh, looking at year-over-year change, um, on those, on those monthly items. On the things down the left-hand column on the bottom, those are those, um, uh, those jobs in target industries and, and, uh, total jobs numbers and wages. Then population, net migration, cost of living, and then the box on the lower right is the, um, is the inventory.
Darren, um, the total workforce was both Riley and Pot County than the things you sent us.
I'm, I'm sorry.
The total workforce was both Riley and Pot County. And I thought fifty-one thousand seemed like an awful big number. I mean, we've only got about fifty-six thousand people living in Manhattan, you know?
In Manhattan and then, so Riley County and, um, so the three-county MSA is about a hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Junction too, it was just Riley and Pot.
That, that number is not, no, um.
It just seemed like, you know, every individual is working, I mean. Some of them are children.
We, we do have a lot of people working, that number's coming directly from the, from the State Department of Labor. So they publish a monthly report and they have, um, Riley and Potawatomi County grouped together in that MSA, so.
I just.
Uh, the, the total, the total labor force, if you look at the, if you look at the, um, the three-county region, that's actually reflected down there. The third to last item on the, on the left-hand side, um, is about seventy-six thousand. So that's the total if you take Riley, Potawatomi, um, and Geary and include, include all, all jobs. So, uh, moving on to some of the internal, and again, these are more, these are more, um, or, or the items that are, are directly impacted. And this is, I know where a lot of the conversation with that small group that worked on this, um, revolved. This is the items that are directly impacted by the activities that go on at the, um, at our economic development, um, and, and our staff and all of that. So we're, think of both the business attraction piece and the existing business development piece as being, right? There's a funnel here, so you're trying to drive, um, engagement through visits, you're trying to drive engagement through lead generation. You're trying to drive engagement through marketing activities and then working that to actual pursuits. So there's, so if we define some of these terms under business attraction, leads or contacts are, are just that. They may be somewhat unqualified, they may be a, a lead on a, on a company that, that, uh, has grown elsewhere or has the potential to grow or, and, and so we're engaging them, um, in, in some capacity. A pursuit then becomes that there's actual, there's actual engagement coming back, right? And so, uh, it becomes a project when there's, as you would expect, there's a legitimate project in place. There's, there's plans, we need to increase capacity, we need to add new location, we need to add employees, we have a new contract. Um, site visits, as Jason alluded to, really is to some degree, that's the, that's the place we need to get to, we need to get to more site visits. Um, again, we're overcoming some things related to, related to, um, uh, sites and building availability. Um, although that's significantly better now than it has been at some points in the past, overcoming some things from a labor force standpoint. But, but there are people, whether they, in our companies, that we get them here almost without fail, we, we tend to outperform expectations. So, um, project wins is, is what you would expect there. And then there's three components, so project wins is, on, on attraction is an announcement, right? That's an announcement, we're gonna add X number of jobs on this timeline, make this capital investment in this space, buy this location, develop this project, lease this space, add, you know, um, and so that's got those, that has to happen for there to be a project win. Jobs payroll and capital investment are measured both on, on, uh, the business attraction side and the existing business development side. See, on business development, um, again, uh, shout out to George for the work he does through our BRNE program. If you remember our annual report at the end of last year, the majority of our economic impact from twenty-twenty-four was driven from, um, business expansion projects. Uh, and that was not just a twenty-twenty-four thing, that was a lot of groundwork that was laid in years leading up to twenty-twenty-four and relationships and, and the work that goes into that effort. But, uh, so those company visits, the new projects, the project wins, um, and then jobs payroll and capital investment are measured there as well. And then on the small business end, um, this is an evolving component. So when we look at the, when we look at some of the, the goals here or the, the targets in a minute, um, just keep in mind, so we're changing up some of the, um, structure of how this is done. Innovate, Stephanie Pierce and Innovate Twenty-Four are also bringing in the Small Business Development Center, um, function, um, under their umbrella. And gonna contract some of those hours and those client, um, engagements back to, um, the Washburn SBDC. And so, uh, we will probably be editing that, that, that is in process right now, we'll probably be editing those numbers a little bit. But, uh, if you, if you look on the, um, so this is what that looks like, and this is a bit of an eye test on the, on the screen. Um, uh, but you, those, um, uh, whoops, too far, those, uh, those items, I'm just gonna run through here and talk a little bit about, about targets. Um, so first, where do leads come from? Lead generation, um, we do through a number of ways. One, third-party lead generation, we do engage with, uh, an industry-leading entity that works with a lot of communities, uh, to specifically target in those target sectors, especially in the, in the bio-manufacturing, biosecurity and then in the manufacturing, um, component. Uh, we work with, uh, through Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership with Potawatomi County Economic Development. There's a significant online marketing presence and email marketing presence and, and social media that goes on there as well. Work with, uh, the state and other economic development entities around the state, uh, to, through an entity called Team Kansas, whereas we're, we're going out and, and recruiting as a group, recruiting as a state to try to attract attention and bring, bring companies and, and create interest in Kansas. Uh, we're also doing a number of site selector events, so these are folks that are managing projects for companies, helping them choose where is the best place for you to go? Where's the best place to go and, and, and make an investment in, in capital and in people? And then work with, with entities like Kansas State, obviously new corporate engagement office there, um, but working across the university to ensure that we're leveraging everything we can from the university. So what does that equate to? The numbers that are in the spreadsheet, say a hundred and forty-four, that's a number that's probably gonna need to be adjusted with this recent engagement on lead generation. Um, the, the goal there is five hundred leads over the course of the next several months. Um, what, we have done this previously, we can expect, I think that that ultimately works into, works into probably, um, fifteen to twenty, um, fifteen to twenty, uh, pursuits and, and then some number of projects from there. Uh, but this is doing that targeted work, um, working with an entity that specializes in that, in that work. Um, from a pursuit standpoint, and, and some of this is based off of taking numbers averaging the last couple of years and then, and then growing those by a percentage. But, uh, looking at ninety-six pursuits, thirty-six projects, six site visits and four project wins that would total, um, at least one hundred jobs and five million dollars in, in new annual payroll, uh, to the community. And, um, in capital investment, uh, I believe that number is, uh, five million dollars on capital investment.
So Darren, can I ask a clarifying? So, you're saying your target for, is a hundred new jobs in what timeframe?
In a year.
In a year, so, we would expect to see by this time in twenty-twenty-six?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I forgot what year we were in for a brief moment there.
The, the benefit of not writing a whole lot of checks anymore is you can't mess that.
Right, okay, so we're looking at a hun, our target is a hundred new jobs?
Hundred annually, in, in the new, new business recruitment piece. It is also very close to a hundred in the, in the existing business piece. So, quick math on that, right? That totals up to about two hundred a year, over five years, that's a thousand. When we're in here, uh, uh, you know, we have been talking about a five hundred goal over five years previously. So we're being aggressive with these targets. And I think that's, you know, that's something that, that I want to call out, that we believe that these efforts were, were undertaking from the growth plan and the lead generation and, and some of the other activities, the fact that there's additional, um, inventory available, the investment that's been made by, by the folks with Building K and investment on some other, other, uh, assets that, that we have the ability to drive greater numbers than, than we've even been talking about previously. So, uh, switching over there then to that existing business piece, um, talking about sixty company visits a year, um, that lead to eight new projects, um, six project wins, right? That's when you're working with companies here and you've identified a project, your likelihood of, of, of getting a win out of that and bringing that across the finish line tends to be greater with the existing businesses. Um, ninety-six jobs and, and, and just under five million dollars in, in, in annual payroll added from that. So, um, yeah, the, the baseline for annual payroll is just, is a fifty thousand dollar a job number. Uh, that's the math behind that, just, just for reference. And then entrepreneurship and small business, uh, again, I'm gonna reference a little bit based off some numbers that, uh, uh, working with Innovate Twenty-Four and, and, um, and SBDC, they're a little different than what are in your, in your packet. But, uh, but looking probably at around a hundred entrepreneurs and small businesses, um, engaged with and impacted on an, on an annual basis with assistance, um, uh, probably around ten new startups. And, and then the community-based funding, uh, the loan programs, the city, the, the city capitalized loan program, the Network Kansas programs, uh, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year in, um, in, in new loans. And so that's, uh, that total portfolio is just over a million right now. Um, that goes back over about the last four years, so we're bumping that up a bit. And based on current activity, we've got a loan review committee tomorrow, um, based on, based on current activity, I anticipate, um, um, getting to that goal and surpassing it this year. So, I'm happy to answer any questions on the economic development side and probably good time for, to, to pause with that. And then, um, Marcia's gonna, has her, um, component incorporated with her quarterly report, so.
Okay.
I went first on the last one, you can go.
Um, I, I mean, clearly there's a lot of work done and I appreciate that. I will say I was looking for a much, uh, simpler tie to outcomes of just saying, hey, 'cause, 'cause really this conversation started with the, um, our funding that goes into it. And so I was really just looking for, really, how many jobs are we gonna, are you guys gonna create with the, you know, funding that you're given? And this is where it'll be this year, this will be next year. Um, so I, I still think needing to really dig in and read the very small numbers that were put in there. But, I mean, the big things I, I was looking for were the new jobs and new businesses are the, are the big numbers that I tend to, to highlight. Um, I think capital investment's a really great one too, but appreciate the work that was done on it, um.
Yeah, so just to summarize this, we're talking about, we're talking about, um, you know, in the range of ten project wins and, and two hundred jobs a year.
Yeah, I, I'm with Jamie. Um, what I asked for back in September were really measurable outcomes. So you're saying twenty-five, we're gonna get X number of, and then when we look at funding you in December, we'll say you did better than we thought or you didn't do as well as we thought. And so I, I think it's a, a little complicated what you've presented to us. And there's been a lot of probably's in there. Um, I, I'd kinda like to just see a, a metric that showed we're gonna have this many of this and this many of that, and that's our goal.
Okay.
And I realized that, you know, but you guys were the ones that.
Um, I think that as we were developing these or considering them, part of the rationale was to illustrate the process that the chamber goes through, that there are steps that have to be taken that are spending some of the money that we're supporting them with in order to come to those, uh, outcomes that we're looking at. Um, I think for, it can, you know, a brief report six months from now or a year from now, indeed, you can probably consolidate that down. But I think it is helpful for the public to be aware of the process that, you know, a, a factory just doesn't fall into your lap. There's a lot that has to go on behind the scenes in order to develop the leads, pursue the viable leads, do site visits. And so, uh, on that level, I do think it's kind of helpful to, for us to be very transparent about what, you know, what you are doing with the public funds that we're providing.
And, and just as a note, and I, I appreciate that, and I think, yeah, we will do our best to keep that as, as clear and concise going forward. Uh, please know that the underlying data is there if, if you would like to talk about, and it is provided on a monthly basis as part of our monthly report to the city. So, I'm always happy to discuss any of the, any of the contents of that.
Um, I had a couple of questions about housing metrics. Um, so we had the housing stock. Um, are there other metrics that we could use, um, that we could get? I, I know, having some conversations with some folks, um, there was a, a suggestion about affordability, uh, things like that. The challenge with that is, I believe the affordability metric is released every four years or something like that by the Centurions and some of them are only annual. Um, and I guess that maybe kind of goes into a larger conversation about like, what role the chamber and, and, and economic development is playing in our housing development? Do you think that's kind of a larger conversation we should be having or, or what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think if, if there are other items from a housing standpoint, again, we, there is some, there is some, um, reference to affordability and approachability in that growth plan. And, and it is a difficult thing to quantify and then, and then measure against. But yes, if, if there's a desire to see some of that or if nothing else to track it and be able to reference back to it, um, you know, we, we, over the last couple of years have made, um, housing and, and, and especially the, kind of the three components of one, um, utilize and maximize programs, whether they be at the state level like our HID and Jason talked about all this, right? Whether they be, um, any of those, any of those state or, uh, local state or national programs, um, do the things and advocate on behalf of, of, um, of changes to zoning and, and/or other things that help build density and then drive workforce, right? Drive, drive more people, work with MATC, um, you know, our talent initiatives are actively out there, recruiting in high schools right now through higher paths to get folks to come to MATC and go into construction trades and go into healthcare. And so, um, yeah, but those are really the three areas in housing that, that we've been focusing a lot of efforts. And, and, um, you know, that's something that we're gonna continue to report on as part of the narrative going forward. Um, if there are metrics, um, metrics that y'all would like to see in that space, obviously that's one of the more challenging places to, to, to measure and, and compare against, but we'd be happy to talk about that.
I think it's, I think it's worthwhile, um, you know, Jason mentioned with, one of our factors is, is our low, uh, job, or our smaller job pool. Um, we can't grow our job pool if people aren't living here. So, um, you know, I think that's, it's definitely worthwhile to be part of the conversation. Um, my other question, uh, House Bill twenty-three oh-four, I don't know if you're familiar, it's the, um, it establishes like the. it's the, um, it establishes like the, um, Commerce Department's database of economic incentives. Do these, um, do these numbers kind of align with those requirements? If you're familiar with that, or maybe that might be a more of a Jason question?
Yeah, I am not familiar to speak to it right now. I'm happy to come back on that, um, or if anyone wants to stand up behind me and offer an opinion, that's fine too. Um, but, uh, you know, we, we definitely have, have, um, from a, from an incentive standpoint, obviously we're interested, and we alluded to the incentive, um, the incentive piece and what Jason talked about, and we're, we're interested in return on investment and bringing that back. And I know some of the conversations at the state are the same, um, maybe coming at a little different approach than we do locally.
Yeah, it's just, it, it's, uh, I, I think it's gonna go to the governor's desk, um, but yeah, it just kind of establishes us a requirement for local entities to, to report to the state, and the state has to maintain a database, and it's gonna be fun to set up. So, um, you know, just kind of thinking ahead and making sure we're not having to, uh, come up with new numbers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I, I do want to know back on your, on the housing question, because I probably made that sound more complicated than easy. I mean, there are some things, right, that we can track directly. We can track how many R H I D projects went through over the course of a year, how many new units did that create, how many other programs, um, you know, recently some state funding into one of those programs, how many outside funding dollars were secured through those. Um, I mean, I think those are all things that, that, um, whether it be through here or whether, you know, there's components of that that require state, city and state reporting already because of those, because of those programs and reporting by the developer, um, there are numbers that exist there that we can, we can report on, but that's gonna be a relatively narrow scope.
I'd, I'd caution about reporting just for the sake of reporting, because yes, the chamber may provide a letter of support that we, um, move forward with a development project that includes an R H I D, but it's not necessarily the chamber that has generated the interest on the part of the developer to do that, you know? And so, um, we, within our office here, would be able to track some of that information as well. So I would just caution about, um, if you're interested in that, talk to Stephanie.
Yeah, and that's kind of, that's kind of where I was going with my quest, or well, I, I kind of meandered, I guess, um, is, is what, where do those, where, where do we draw the line, right? Because, yeah, we do have community development, but we, we have also identified that housing is a, a factor of economic development. Um, so another, another thing I was thinking, I was looking at was like rental availability, right? We're talking about, about housing stock for, for purchase, but I think we have more than fifty percent of our, uh, community members' rent. Um, and I, I, I think I've seen we've had, we've generally have over ninety percent occupancy in our rental market, which, um, is very difficult if you're moving, especially if you're moving to Manhattan in, uh, March or April and you need an apartment today, good luck. Um, and, uh, you know, I think that those are the kinds of things that, that go along with that, but you do bring a good point, is that, you know, the chamber and, and economic development is not directly involved in our housing projects. Um, and like, does that need to be more of a cooperation, or do we just need to keep them separate, but still also track them together?
Well, I, I think, you know, the idea of rental availability, housing stock, certainly that's giving an overall picture to the feasibility of attracting employers to Manhattan.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we're talking about a potential new project with X number of new jobs, is that go, how, what proportion of X is going to be recruited from nearby counties where people can commute here versus bringing in people who are going to need housing? So I think it is an important indicator to track, um, but I wouldn't get into the weeds with some of the other issues.
Yeah.
In my, that'd be my opinion.
And I know, you know, I, I definitely recognize that the availability of data is very important as well. You know, we don't need to be, um, coming up with these new metrics that we are inventing and tracking and, uh, and things like that. It's very, gets very complicated, so.
But they also help make informed decisions and provide overall guidance. Again, that's why this kind of is, and that probably went into more detail, and some of this needs to, but that's why this is really split into two pieces, right? One is very much a community metrics, more of a thirty thousand foot view, one is very much an activity, you know, an organizational activity snapshot that's done monthly and, and reported monthly, and so, you know, we, we want to be a contributing, you know, contribute to that, that decision-making and, and that perspective positively.
And, and Darren, I think I made this comment at some point during our discussions over the past couple of months, there's a couple of indicators there where we're not going to move the needle very broadly. And I'm thinking specifically about, um, migration, um, you know, population size. Again, we might bring in, let's say we have a hundred new jobs, let's say that fifty percent of those people who are taking those jobs are married, let's say that twenty percent of them have kids, you know, you're talking about a change of two hundred and fifty people when enrollment may be declining at the university or the, the base may downsize. So I'd, I'd caution us also about putting, um, you know, let's, let's keep our perspective when we're looking at some of these indicators, because there's plenty that is beyond our control. You know, there, we're not going to see the population of Manhattan increase by five thousand in the next five years. If you have a way to do that, I'd sure like to hear about it.
I, I hope to be in front of you all frequently working towards it.
Well, I think too, there's a question of, do we want Manhattan to increase by five thousand in five years or whatever? Um, and how does that really improve the quality of life of people who already live in Manhattan?
Yep.
And, um, I think one thing we definitely should track is these jobs that we want to bring in, are they really good paying jobs?
Mm-hmm.
You know, if they're all minimum wage and, um, they will put burdens on our social services, then it's not a positive for Manhattan, even if you, you know, bring in some company. I know, um, in the nineties, we were in kind of a slump, the fort had taken quite a dip, and we did bring in a call center, and we thought very seriously about that. It was only paying eight dollars an hour, but at that point, we had a lot of people that that looked good to. Of course, that would be more now. But, um, so I don't, I don't, I think we need to really look at measurement in a way that really shows how that's improving every other, you know, people who already live here.
And I completely agree on the wages part. We, we will report, uh, new jobs, new announcements will always include wage data.
Yeah.
With them. And of course, that becomes part of our annual report, um, that we provide at the end of the year too, will, will be a breakdown of what those wages are.
Okay.
Very important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Would you like to take a break, or do you, would you like to take? Okay. We'll take a ten-minute break and then we'll come back and hear about the Chamber of Commerce.
Give me a chance to get this in. I added a slide.
I know, at the very end.
I was going, looking for yours. And I was like, I don't see it.
I forgot to pull hers up.
At the very end.
Can I just put it in that one?
Yeah, just throw it on and then...
And then once you load it, can I pull it back out or will you?
What I'll do is, since you added a slide, well, uh, is this one?
Mm-hmm.
What I'm also gonna do, well, actually, well, we go, close the, you know what these?
One of those.
I'm gonna help Brenda out and drop this into the back, and so that way...
It's there, updated. It's just one slide at the very end. I just thought, you know, and done again.
Very good. All right. Let's see if this works.
Oh, you know, yeah, it doesn't matter.
Well, we'll know which one's which.
Oh, yeah, 'cause it says with notes.
Oh, if you don't want this one, I mean, you want me to delete this one?
Yeah.
This one that I just added?
Uh-huh.
If it's just a slide that doesn't change anything.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't change anything. It will be okay.
Okay.
It'd rather not.
Well, they won't be out there after.
You never know.
All right, that's that one.
Yeah, that would be great. That's, that's one for me. And the other one's fine.
I ejected this one. I'm blind. There you go.
Done?
Mm-hmm.
Even though it's still unlike?
Yeah, you're good. I ejected it. Don't leave it up here.
Well, we got, yeah. So, it's a house. It's a house. It's a very good house. And it, it is...
This is not good.
We only have one, one lot. We're broadcast. You do have to cross the highway, but it's just, it's just... And, yeah, it was a great way out, so it took us two days to get down. We stopped in Huntsville on the way down and went to the Space and Rocket Center, which is really cool. Uh, they have a standing Saturn V rocket, and then they have to build this.
What are viewers now?
Stage and hell. It displays about like, computers that are involved in it. It was a Saturn V rocket. Um...
It's a very positive thing, right? Is what? Great for now. Yeah. Okay. The last thing on our general agenda is a Visit Manhattan quarter...
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I'm Marcia Rosell, Director of Visit Manhattan, and I am here tonight to present our first quarter report to you, along with the metrics. So just a reminder of our focus for Visit Manhattan, it's always to attract those visitors to spend outside dollars and bolster our economy. Uh, economic impact of tourism is significant. It was two hundred and twenty-seven point three million for two thousand and twenty-three. We should be receiving the two thousand and twenty-four data any day, um, and those percentages that are in those five categories is really on par for our, the size of our community and the amenities that we have. So here's my, uh, metrics, and, uh, as Darren mentioned, you know, with his economic development metrics, we've discussed this for quite a while with, uh, what's appropriate for tourism. Uh, for the community metrics, the key indicators for tourism include the collection that the city will gain of transient guest tax dollars, both from our hotels and our short-term rental properties, tracking occupancy, and the average... This graph shows our monthly occupancy. February was light. We do also get the weekly occupancy. And I wanted to mention that our single highest occupancy for the first quarter was 98%. And that was on Saturday, March 8th, which was Fake Patty's Day.
Did they do minimum two nights that weekend?
They did not do, they did not do them.
Should have.
They probably will next year.
Right, right. Depends on how much damage.
Yeah. Actually, we've heard from some of our hoteliers that the damage was lighter this year, so that's a, that's a positive. This is our year-to-date occupancy. We're currently at 43.8%. Year-to-date revenue, 3.7 million, which is just over 284,000 in TGT collected. Short-term rentals continue to be increasing for Manhattan with supply and demand. Occupancy is just slightly less than a hotel stay at 42% compared to the 44%.
That's, that's, is that room, the supply?
Yes, so that's the supply for year-to-date through February. So the number of rooms that's available for those 60 days.
Is almost 6,000?
And I should say, the average listing there, the 272 is for the month of February, though I should have had that say per month, but.
So what's the difference between a supply and a listing?
So the supply is the actual number of rooms, because each property could be a whole house, it could be one bedroom, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. And then the available listing is actually the property. So the number of properties that we have that are on short-term rentals.
So we have 2,000, 272 properties, but over 5,000, almost 6,000 rooms.
Rooms over the, over the two months.
So it's, those are rooms, so we don't, we couldn't divide it by 272, but. We would be dividing that by 60 for the number of nights.
Okay, okay. That's, so that's room nights.
Room nights.
Got it, okay, that makes much more sense.
Yep.
Unless you're renting a 30-room mansion.
Our team, which is Jen Alley, Lauren Chard, and Julie Valde-Paris, is off to a strong start this year with booking the number of events. And I have no doubt they'll exceed the 280 that we booked in 2024. These tables provide, oops, excuse me, I went backwards. These tables provide a breakdown of the number of meetings that took place in the first quarter, as well as those that have been confirmed and scheduled for future dates. Of the 47 meetings held in quarter one, Kansas Rec. and Park Association held their annual conference here in Manhattan with 450 attendees. And the Kansas Association of Education Service Agencies had 350 in attendance. And we continue to hear from planners that the conferences that, that come here tend to set record attendance numbers when they rotate to Manhattan. We strive to make their time in Manhattan extremely positive, increasing the likelihood that their return and enhancing their reputation as a destination for meetings. We had 18 sports and special events held in the first quarter with 20 booked into the future. I wanted to give you an update on our sports tourism study that we're, that we've contracted with Huddle Up Group. They've conducted interviews and assessments with key leaders and sports planners. And we, we should be receiving that playbook next week, fingers crossed. And that strategic plan will further enhance our capabilities as a sports tourism destination. One highlight was again hosting 2A state basketball here in Manhattan. This tournament ran very smoothly due to the great staff, a solid partnership with K-State Athletics, and the numerous volunteers who contributed their time and talents to welcoming these athletes and fans to Brambridge. We were the only cashless facility of the seven host sites in the state, and that went much better than expected. We had close to 10,000 fans for the four-day tournament with over 250 room nights. We also hosted Kansas Special Olympics just this past weekend with 900 athletes and their coaches in town for the two days. And we utilized the Anthony and Eisenhower Recreation Centers. Together, these two sporting events had an economic impact of almost a half a million dollars. I want to thank the steering committee members who serve on the advisory role to Visit Manhattan. And I added this slide, because of the big announcement with the increased plane size to and from Chicago, I just wanted to make you aware that we had added additional signage out at the Manhattan Regional Airport. And we've also increased our digital manhappiness campaign with Gray's Digital Media to include Omaha as well as Kansas City and Wichita. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I did hear one horror story about flying to Chicago. The planes didn't go one day and then they didn't go the next day until three hours late. And so the, the people spent seven hours in our airport and missed their connection. So I kept thinking, couldn't they go to Dallas or couldn't they do something with, you know? Are you at all talking to the World Cup people about the soccer coming in?
We are, we're talking, we are, we are not going to be a host facility for a practice team.
Yeah.
But we are talking with World Cup all the time. We're, we have itineraries that are out within the region to make sure that anybody that's in the area can come. I, Mayor, I think we'll see this bump out effect of the World Cup.
I just wondered, you know, it'd be worthwhile even lining up some buses. My son-in-law has checked online and you can't know who's going to be playing.
Not yet.
Or where your seat is, but you can buy a ticket now.
Yes.
For $5,500. And of course, they're going to have, they're going to have the prelims, you know, the four teams, and then they'll have the semis here.
Correct, correct.
Two different things, so I mean, if people are willing to put down, that kind of, not even knowing what country is going to be here.
Sure, yeah, no, we expect to see, we expect to see some increase in tourism through that, those two months, that that is happening in Kansas City for certain, yeah.
I mean, I think, Marcia, I just want to emphasize how much we're going to be depending on you, especially with, I think, some of the worries with Fort Riley leaving next year and how important everything you're doing, and hopefully we're, we're building up to really bring in a lot of tourism, a lot of guests into our community to kind of help offset that, so.
And we, and we've got a solid relationship with Fort Riley, and in fact, Kristen Bishop at the Chamber goes there weekly, takes our visitors' guides. We're constantly trying to promote the fact that the soldiers and their families that are coming here are truly visitors to begin with. And we want to make sure that we're giving them a great experience.
Yeah, and just hoping that we can capture some others when they're not at Fort Riley. We can capture some other, offset some of that revenue that will be leaving us.
I have heard K-State's canceling some travel for, to meetings, and so that means probably other people are canceling travel to come here. So I, I think that's going to be hard.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Second.
It's the Newton Second, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Four teams, and then they'll have the semis here.
Correct, correct.
Two different things, so I mean if people are willing to put down, that kind of not even knowing what country is going to be here.
Sure, yeah, no, we expect to see, we expect to see some increase in tourism through that, those two months, that that is happening in Kansas City for certain, yeah.
I mean, I think, Marcia, just want to emphasize how much we're going to be depending on you, especially with, I think, some of the worries with Fort Riley leaving next year, and how important everything you're doing, and hopefully, we're, we're building up to really bring in a lot of tourism, a lot of guests into our community to kind of help offset that, so.
And we, and we've got a solid relationship with Fort Riley, and in fact, Kristen Bishop at the Chamber goes there weekly, takes our visitors' guides, we're constantly trying to promote the fact that the soldiers and their families that are coming here are truly visitors to begin with, and we want to make sure that we're giving them a great experience.
Yeah, and just hoping that we can capture some others when
Yes.
they're not at Fort Riley, we can capture some other, offset some of that revenue that will be leaving us.
I think I have heard K-State's canceling some travel for, to meetings, and so that means probably other people are canceling travel to come here, so I, I think it's going to be hard.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
To session to receive information on a legal matter in consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in, privileged in an attorney-client rela- relationship. How long do you think we're going to need?
Let's start with 20 minutes.
Okay, then we will come back at 20:45, is that?
Eight forty-five?
Eight forty-five. I mean eight, yeah.
I mean, you're not wrong.
I know, I'm thinking German. Sorry, I'm sorry, yes, eight, eight twenty-five to everybody in the audience.
I, I've got it. I motion, we recess into executive session to receive information on a legal matter in consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 754319B2, and to resume the open meeting in the City Commission Room at 8:45 PM.
Second.
It's been moved to second, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. [END TRANSCRIPT]
So moved.
We did not take any action.
We cannot take any action. You did not decide to take any action. Okay. Move to adjourn?
Move that we adjourn the March 25, 2025 special city commission meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.